Forrest Councilier.
Thank you. I just want to come back to what I talked about a little bit earlier on that line item. My colleagues asked some great questions that I think informed me a little bit more too on the funding. So, I guess through you, Ms. Chen, to the mayor's representative, you're saying that before the end of this year seventeen, which is the end of June, so long as we get your list together, get the R and P, get the ball on, that these ones can be appropriate for this year's season, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have an idea of whether we could possibly get an update on that? I don't want to stand up on too much of a bar.
I can certainly provide an update over the next couple of days, just how long it will take, if it's possible, if it's not possible.
Okay.
Generally, steep procedure would be on that side of contract to put the advertisement in the central register and advertise in the local paper for a minimum of two weeks. And then there's at least a week, usually two weeks, when people will pick up the bids, put their prices together, and then submit their price. And then at that point, the bids would be evaluated and then a contract put out, even if it's rushed. You know, at that point, we're about at five weeks, which is, I think, about what we have left in the fiscal year.
And that sounds like a best-case scenario, but we don't have to get to that end point before this means that, again, these money's going to be appropriate. Is this amount of getting that advertisement out to show the first step in that process that counts towards that, or is it...
I believe the purchase order has to be cut. But I'm, again, I'm not sure.
And let's say that, again, best-case scenario, that does get done. What do you think, in all honesty, do you have your department's capacity to then, you know, go ahead and execute that? Do you think that you guys will be able to manage that in the remaining months? Or even, let's say, this year eighteen, you have the funds there, you have it available. What do you think is your department's capability then to get it done in the next fiscal year?
Well, we wouldn't be doing any of it, other than managing the list, dealing with the contractor, marking out, and then supervising the actual installations. We would not be planting the trees ourselves.
So whoever submits them, they're the ones doing it?
That's correct.
Or they realize on the ground that it's...
That's correct.
Okay. So the management on your end of it, in your department, is just getting those lists together and overseeing it to make sure that the list sort of is a punch list, right? They're all getting completed.
Yes, right.
And how many trees roughly did... I'm sorry, you mentioned this earlier or answered it earlier. How many trees about would a hundred thousand dollars cover?
Right now, the tree, the tree size that we most commonly plant, which is two to two and a half inches in diameter down near the ground, six inches above the ground, are about five hundred dollars a tree. Five hundred, maybe five fifty, depending on the variety.
Does that include the labor costs as well?
Yes, yep.
So just five hundred dollars?
Yep. That's the tree, the planting, from all the stakes, and the guarantees.
And yet, we don't have that list as of yet, so you don't know it's going to be, you know, two, or ten, or fifteen. We don't have a number yet, right?
I, I don't know it.
So you know when you might be able to get that number to us?
Almost immediately, as soon as we need to check with the office, see where that list is at.
Okay. Sorry, Ms. Chen, I'd like to put a motion to hold this until we get that number. I just want to get a better idea of what we're looking at for this line item. I don't, if the department needs it, don't want to cut from it and take that ability away from the next year, certain beautifying cities that I didn't want to see happen. It just seems all very inconvenient right now, that we don't have a list with a number of trees that we're looking at through this past fiscal year. We don't even know what it looks like moving forward. As far as capacity goes, I'm glad that it's out of your department. Not to say you can't handle it, but, you know, you're going to put out a bid and then somebody else is going to, to execute the work, but just to have a number and have an idea to see, are we needing that number? Are we over, are we under? It'd be helpful if you had a number in front of us.
I think the other thing that I would say is that, looking at the history of this line item, we used to have three hundred thousand dollars in, in the tree planting item. And then things got tight. It went down to one fifty, it went down to a hundred. It got cut completely for at least two years, I believe.
Yeah, I see that that was the fifth year, wasn't it?
Last year, it went back up to a hundred. It's at a hundred again, primarily because we're level funded. So I, I think that historically, we can look at the amount of money that's been spent on new trees and the number of trees, which I could, you know, we could look at the tree log and say, well, we took down this many, that usually we guessed, and I will say it's a guess, that we're taking down somewhere between three hundred and three hundred and fifty trees a year. So that in, in the past, since the three hundred thousand dollar year, we've always felt that we've been going behind on, on new trees. Trees cut down versus trees planted.
In effect, the funding, or is it...
Excuse me?
Oh, sorry. Is that, do you feel like you're behind because of the funding, or do you feel you're behind because of not being able to get to the...
Because of, because of funding. It's, to some extent, a gut feeling, is that the tree inventory in the city is decreasing. And, you know, the only way we would have to quantify that is to look at how many we've taken down and then go back through our history and see how many we've planted. But it's been sketchy, catch-as-scratch-can since about six years ago.
Okay. Well, again, it's my thought on this, that I think it'd be helpful for both of us if we can get a list of all the trees that we're looking at, or number of properties, just to have a, a number in front of us to say, okay, this is what we're looking at, this is what we need to put out for bid, and this is the potential cost associated with it. Not just to, you know, again, to get an understanding of this last fiscal year, but the appropriation amount in front of us for next fiscal year. So if we could just put this on hold and get those numbers and bring it back in front of us.
So you're going to get a motion to put the budget on hold, correct? Pending additional backup from the park department?
Yes, please.
Correct? So that would, is a motion approved, we'll approve on the budget. Your motion, we're going to go take a roll on that, see how that goes.
Yeah, it's always been customary, again, that the parliamentary procedure engaged with a finance committee is that, you know, a motion to cut doesn't require a second, a motion approved doesn't require a second. But one of the things that's always been present is when a councilor requests to hold, that's generally been on it because it's based on the need for additional information to consider for their role. So, again, not uncertain if we need to vote, we should be voting on, again, on a request to hold on a particular item.
I will defer to your...
Basically, it should be, again, just unanimous consent of the body here to place something on hold. Because, again, if we start, if I want, the next time I want some information, a majority doesn't, you know, it's really not appropriate, maybe, than a finance committee to function in such a manner.
Sure. Honestly, I can, I can appreciate that. I guess, Paul, the next time that we're going to read your name is the twenty-fourth of October. Does that give you enough time to produce the data that...
Excuse me. Yeah, all right.
Sorry, just a second. Did he say interested to call the office? Did he say interested to call the office? Can't he just come later in the session?
Well, we're going to, I guess, see how the remainder of the afternoon goes, but if we're able to move through it, I have no problem with you coming back. But if, for some reason, it doesn't work out, we're back in here on the twenty-fourth, so, um, there it is. So thank you. We'll chat when you eventually do that.
All right. Next, uh, next item on the agenda is engineering, and that can be found on page forty-nine, Commissioner, very small.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Madam President, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to be here this afternoon. It's always a pleasure to talk about public works whenever I have the occasion. Before I begin, I just want to, on behalf of the public works department, to thank Councilor Joe Phan, who's the chairman of the Public Works Committee, not normally counted, but working the task as well. We understand that he'll be leading the city council at the end of this year. Both personally and professionally, I want to thank Joe for his exceptional advocacy and the effort and the work that he's done, and the city, and his steadfast support of the public and public works. Thank you, Mr. Chen.
Madam Chair, as I indicated, it's a pleasure to be here. We've had a great two thousand sixteen. I know that you've already in the Quincy Sun that we were awarded a Stormwater Management Award from a number of New England stormwater organizations, and it was presented, it will be presented by the New England Stormwater Management Award, presented by the New England Stormwater Collaborative. That's a group that consists of New England Water Works Association, New England Chapter of American Public Works Association, and the New England Water Consortium. And that's mainly because of the work of the Public Works Department, Gear Call John Sullivan and of Ryan and others, in, in developing the clean water is everybody's business. So those of you who use the bumper stickers, if you'd like to put one of these on your vehicle, that would be great, all right? It's, it's our way of educating the public that our waterways are treasured assets, we need to protect them, and it's everybody's business to do that. And part of the award was the development of our calendar, which not only informs the public relative to the stormwater ideas and other ideas, but it allows the public to have, week to week, day by day, week to week, month to month, season by season, the indication has to ninety-eight percent accuracy, it depends on what the things, things may change. So that, and our info letter, which we mail twice a year to about forty thousand folks, so it's an outreach transparency, like the public works going to be stored to a step within the city, advocating on public work in the community. This past week, we were honored for the sixth consecutive time, this is a different recognition, this is by the Department of Primary and Mental Protection, presented to the Quincy Water Department by outstanding performance and achievement in the year two thousand sixteen. And that was supported as well by a proclamation from Governor Well. And in a few weeks, the Clean Water Claude Organization, which is a nationwide organization, but also has a chapter within Massachusetts, and they'll be recognizing us for excellence in two thousand sixteen as well. I'm not going to do a lot of presenting, we're going to leave that up to, to the folks who are in, in front of you. Paul Delabad, who's a manager of the Water Department, will be doing water. Gear Call, the compliance manager, will be doing sewer drain. Manager Mike Norton will be doing highway. Senator D'Antebo will be doing ice control, snow management. And John Sullivan will be doing waste management. And, and my sense is, during their presentations, they'll be able to, if not specifically indicate to you what's happening in their respective departments, but give you a sense of the movement of, of this department with respect to some of the comments by Councilor Kelly and others, that we are still have a degree of reactiveness. Obviously, that's part of the mission of public works. Someone has an event at their home or, or on their street, that's an emergency, or something that has really been uncovered, we have a consistent obligation to respond to that as soon as we can. So we have a goal of responding to our requests within a twenty-four or forty-hour period. Probably supplementing that proactivity, we deal with our sidewalks, we deal with other aspects of public works. So whole fundamental mission of the department, providing a service, we like to think that we're graduating towards a combination of proactiveness, as well as a very responsible and effective reactiveness as well. The other idea that I think I'm hoping you'll find in these presentations is the whole idea that the public sector can do it all. We rely on our private partners, not only to do those things that we are not able to do, but also to do those things in partnership with us to make our job more effective. So Mike Norton will indicate to you that, for the first time in the history of, of these ones, since I lived here, and I didn't include my, my time as a city council. As you know, we went down this journey a couple of years ago of highlighting sidewalk repairs, which, interestingly enough, when I listen to you folks, when you talk about the complaints you get, no one seems to talk about sidewalks ever. My name, Councilor Phan's name, water bill escalating up, down, roller coaster bills were a pretty big issue, and sidewalk repairs going into black hole, never being heard again, was a significant issue. For those of us who like to know, I'm going to do is try to folks and find out what's happening. So I feel very proud of the fact that that is no longer an issue. And it's no longer an issue because people get letters about how they analyze, when they can affect a repair, and the reaction follow through with the repair. For the past couple of weeks, trying to get through that backlog, we've had to unfortunately have a cutoff time. We're hoping that with this, again, the proactive, reducing the backlog, and having a public, private working relationship with the two internal eleven-three-and-nine crews that we have, coupled with a private contractor, the money's in this budget, and that's why I'm talking about it a bit. We're hoping, even though it's a large year, and you folks can be able to coordinate with us and pounding up those requests, we're actually hoping to be able to fulfill our goal, which is if a person makes a request during the construction season, our commitment is to repair that within that same year. What we tell people right now, or before this year, that they call it in, if it's rated as a trip hazard, we'll catch it within the next year. But with all that, we're trying to, I feel very confident we'll be able to fulfill that within this year. That's a huge effort by this, private credit, much credit, obviously, to the managers who put this together, the engineering department that has managed this, Senator D'Antebo, Mike Norton, the engineers who work on this, the eleven-three-and-nine crew, UPA do all the work with respect to the collateral and the device we're using. I feel very good about where the public works was, has been, and where we're at. So we're very optimistic, very upbeat. There's not a whole lot new with this budget, unfortunately for us, but fortunately for you folks, you don't have a lot hopefully to, to, to claim here, and every single penny is important to us, and it will be spent for those purposes to promote public works. So I'm going to bring up John Sullivan first to talk about waste management.
If I could, while the commissioners give a forty retreats, I'm sorry. Just a couple of comments on your comments, your opening remarks. I was going to commend you, before you commended yourself on the sidewalks, but you're exactly right, you're, you're exactly right on, you know, the commissioner reminds you of that quote. Yes, yeah, yeah. Oh, is that right? No, again, no, but I, but I've, I've said this almost every year, I mean, you're really moving, you, unlike what's happened in most of the departments and what we're talking about today, the long-term vision is to get proactive and looking at, and just what you saw, we just went, what I went through with the backlog with Mr. France, about, well, what would it take to get to a place where we were even and were able to handle things as they come in? And in this, I've had the pleasure of, almost eight years I've been on the council, seven years of which I think about you being the commissioner, it's gone in the sidewalk program... It's six years. It's gone from...
It seems like so.
It seems like so. Um, it's gone from a place where there was a list, and I don't know if you hear what Mr. Coffin's hearing, said they have three thousand requests, they were able to get to sixteen hundred this year, there's fourteen hundred they haven't got. I feel like that's the place we were at six years ago with the sidewalks. We're not there anymore. The sidewalk list is cleared, and then we start over. I mean, that is ideal. That is the way we want, from my perspective, that is the way I want all the departments for it, tree requests. It would be wonderful, wonderful. If there was a day we could get there with road payment requests, I mean, it's obviously a bigger ticket item, but that's the way I think is a best practice for a municipal to be addressing infrastructure needs. The policy that you've implemented there with the sidewalks, just, I can't comment you enough, it's, it's phenomenal. Every once in a while, I'll get a call now about a sidewalk, and I go, you know, you'll say, oh, my sidewalk's falling. I go, well, how would that be? We're on top of the sidewalks. That means you haven't told us. I said, so, here we go, we're going to call into the sidewalk line, I'm going to email the commissioner, you're going to call to DPW, we're going to get your sidewalk reviewed, and with, and if it meets the grade to be fixed, it's going to get done within a year, it might even get done this year, depending on the cutoff. And, and I don't get the callbacks, like what, what Councilor Forrest was talking about with the trees, we put in a tree request, and then six months later, the person emails me and says, so, hey, what's going on with that tree? So I, I do not hear from anyone? You know, and another thing is you send out the letters, so people know what the, what the sidewalk is rated, they know whether or not it's going to get done, or whether or not it doesn't meet the, the standards now, but it'll be reviewed again in the future. So now the resident knows exactly what's going on, they know that the government's being responsive, we've, we've taken their concerns, we've looked at it, and we can fix it, we fix it, and if not, we'll look at it again to see if it can be fixed later on. With the trees, it's that black hole, I mean, it goes in, and then, and then it's incumbent upon us to try and figure out, well, did anyone even go out there and look at it? Was there a resolution? Is it on a list to get done? Is it not? And then we have to, and it's, you know, it's a, it's a big circular exercise where the bottom line is the constituent's not being served ideally, and the work isn't getting done in a, in a straightforward and reasonable amount of time, which I, I wish we could implement what you've done, this policy with the sidewalks, across a broad spectrum of constituent services and infrastructure improvements in the city. So I, we really, I think it's one of the few things actually in the city that we are proactive about. And to some degree, it's reactive because it has to get called in. But I know you guys are out there, when you're looking at streets, you're looking at the sidewalks too, and it's, it's not just the ones that are getting complained about or calls about that you're replacing. You're replacing the ones as you, as you see them. So I think that is proactive. I really think it's one of the few things in the city that is currently operating in a proactive way. And it's just, you know, it's a, it's a testament to you and the policies you've put in place and the folks that you have working for you, and it's, and I think we have to remember that there was a significant investment by the council and the mayor's commitment to expend those money to get to a point where we work on. And, and refer back to the conversation with Mr. France, that, you know, he said two hundred thousand dollars a year for five years, that got us to this place. Well, at, at a certain point, you made a determination, I don't know what the number was or the timeline was, and you came to this party and said, this is what we need to do contractually, we need to contract this out, and then you fine-tuned that as you went year after year, said, I think we can get more done if we have our guys rip up the sidewalks, and we use the contractors to, to come around and redo them. It'll be an inconvenience for people because maybe the sidewalk will be open for a, a week longer than it normally is, but we can get, you know, twenty-five percent more, ten percent more sidewalk time. And it's, it's just worked, it's worked tremendously well. So kudos for that. And then also, as an opening remark, you were talking about the awards and congratulations. Did you mean to say Governor Well?
Yeah.
So did you say Governor Well has given you, yeah, Governor Well's given you awards? That may have been when you were on the school committee.
Sorry. Very similar, Governor Well.
Old tall Republicans.
Governor Saget, that was back in the first...
I don't know, but I, I'd probably wouldn't mind to say so.
He's helping about, so I think maybe Governor Well's just walking by and gets some leftover awards, he's just giving them out.
So, but just a comment, not to leave a false impression, the, the movement towards
the black hole to where we are, that, that was an important step back in the DPW crews remove and the city and the private contractor repair. We're now beyond that. So we have two separate DPW groups that, and again, it's a holistic approach, and I don't want to take too much away from Mike's presentation, but every piece is part of the puzzle that gets us to the end result. So it does not take us so long to sweep because of the investment by the mayor and his council with additional sweepers. It takes a month and a half in the spring, two months in the summer, in the fall. That's three and a half months. We're not far off. We have a limited amount of construction time. So as you noticed, we pushed back spring to six days, six days, and we pushed back the fall for two weeks, which frees up an extra two months of construction. So right now, we have, private crews have been done with sidewalk repairs. We're not doing the bifurcated removal and replace. They had a list of sidewalks, main concrete, they had done. Those folks got letters, they're happy, the sidewalk surveys will go up. That's another thing we do, we, we send a survey out saying, how do we do? And depending what, what we get back, we've changed our system.
Funny, I've never gotten a survey from you asking me how you do.
Do we ever do a sidewalk?
No.
All right. But if we did your sidewalk, you would get a, a, a report. So, so the private work that was on the list has been done. The public work that is assigned to the DPW groups, we are hoping that it will be completed by July one. So the, the backlog from last year and into this year, we're hoping that from the old days, when, before you started construction, we're pretty much done with high speed work. So that's why I'm very hopeful that with the work that's coming in now, and with the private contractor, there's still money's left in that contract, and with the two additional crews, knowing there'll be vacation times and things like that, more challenges in the summer, that we'll be able to do that. But the same process has occurred with parks. They start early, wait by the phone, when it rings, send, send, pull up. We do a great, great job. For what have we done? Before, we didn't really know how many parcels we did. The word is we did about two thousand. Now we know because we helped and we itemized. And when the time lapses, when people can no longer take action against the city, these are on the list, there's like a sidewalk repairs, and that list will go up on our website, will explain to the public the work that we've done. And you may think that, pretty mild here in the wintertime, that the city did two thousand dollars back in the day, you know, maybe we did six thousand this year. Again, we have two months left, a month and a half into fiscal year. Maybe Councilor Phan says, well, you know, games do us a pretty good, I think they did eight thousand. And maybe Councilor Forrest, well, they do real well, I shouldn't mind it, but I think they did ten. Well, each a day, we've done close to eleven thousand, five hundred part orders. And that's just by answering the phone.
Right.
They're saying, the engineers are, during last winter, to analyze what's four, one and two. One and two, we did a couple of years ago, so we reanalyzed all those and, and realized that there's another four thousand plus parcels. So those are in the bank, ready to go when the weather breaks. And a private contractor went out and he, I think he's pretty much, they go last week or so, and that's done. So it's, whatever can be replicated with other functions of government, it's all different. But what's working here is that proactive approach to basically a reactive function, and also utilizing the private sector not to do a lot, because Paul Delabad will tell you that even so one may be better, efficiently and less expensive, we just don't have enough labor to get it done. But the cost of a private contract with private administration, private engineers and private work, is significantly higher. And, and we've also just started that process, again, being proactive, utilizing the labor that we have within eleven-three-and-nine. So last year, we did, I think, Washington Court. Paul will tell you, this past year, we, we did the cemetery. Mayor wanted the cemetery, water main done, our folks did. We're hoping, if this budget passed, that there's some water main work in here, for the first time last year, folks supported that. I want to get the department into going back when it used to lay water main. Now, again, one of the challenges is we have, we don't have a whole lot of folks here in the department, and if there's a water main break or something, you know... And if there's a water main break or something, you know, when you're doing a water main, you really have to focus on that thing because of the sensitive nature, the notion of water quality, you just can't leave that job site. So, we have to be mindful of it. But there are some smaller streets that we talked to Paul and the general contractor or the general foreman about, that we think we'll be able to accomplish some internal water main replacements.
Well, since I look forward to hearing more about that when we present the budget. The other item I wanted you to want, just know is, when we see you returning time soon at the Public Works Appreciation Week or the Public Works Week, I think that was another thing that you implemented that was fantastic. You know, there were a couple of functions. One, the hardest working folks, city governor, folks in your department, and to give them, you know, to have a luncheon for them, to honor people who have, you know, decades of experience and service. I think that was a wonderful event to appreciate their work on behalf of the city. But then also, also coupled with teaching engineering to school kids and getting them excited about, you know, how things work, especially in this, you know, this day and age where there's really a big push to try and bring more women into the field of engineering and anything to go into the elementary schools or like into the middle schools. Go into the middle schools and have them participate in contests and really understand what it is that the Public Works Department do on a daily basis as well as engineering principles. I think it was fantastic. I would like to see that come back. I'm curious if we will see that come back in the future. All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mitch, before you kind of go into transition, because I believe, I see members of your staff here and I'm assuming that they're all gonna have a part of what you're presenting here, just in terms of, you know, the road work. And I know that that has been, you know, an area of focus, at least for me, that I've been advocating for for the last, you know, three or four years particularly. And I know that, this is just my opinion, I feel that the best example to a taxpayer of what, how their taxpayer at all would be expensed when they have a road crew, is pretty preparing their street, preparing their sidewalk. And I know that if money was not an object, which obviously is, I would be able to do, you know, a lot more. There has been obviously an appetite, and I have suggested, you know, creating or amending the hotel motel tax to allow for, you know, the application of monies to be used towards roads. I know the body has supported it, believe on the public hearing on Monday. But that aside, I mean, one of the struggles that I have was obviously when you were a ward council in Ward Two, road and sidewalks are very important to you and, you know, to your, you know, to your credit. You had some success with getting the infrastructure repaired. Your success becomes my demise, right? Because now, you know, when I'm out there, you know, working with the administration who's been engaged, you know, with me as a ward council, trying to identify where the need is, right? A lot of the streets in Ward Two that are left to get done actually need a water main replacement as well. So, it's not a straightforward paving plan. So, say for example, you know, I had some conversation around Ruggle Street. Ruggle Street is in a very rugged condition. But the reality is, the little pool monies that we have this year, you know, I was told before, we can't use, you know, those monies if that needs a lot of water replacement. Same with Chauvinmont Avenue and Bradford Street. So, then I start to look to Summer Street, which I don't think is on the high priority end of the list. But there's, you know, it's laid out to me that essentially, that you're left with the streets that don't need water, water main replacements. So, as I try to wrap my mind around, you know, what is the state of the road nation? Like, how do we kind of coordinate the effort as the city begins to develop more of an attitude towards road repair, where, you know, we're able to actively, adequately address those streets that need water main replacement? I don't know the answer. Do you have any thoughts around that?
The answer is, the question is?
The question is, how do we kind of utilize maybe some of those monies, the water mains placement, to, you know, cover more ground out there, the streets, I mean, Ward Two, if you're left with streets that need water main replacement, it doesn't matter if you just understand appropriation or road, right?
Some challenges that, not in this budget, but my hope is that this council will be presented with some, the councils that have called for a significant investment in our water mains throughout the city. Paul has a 19th, 27th water main come out of Maines Road. So, just quite 100 years old. So, we have about $226 million worth of work to be moved, pipe just like this.
What, 226?
226 million dollars of work. If you put us on a 40-year construction plan, you do 12,000 maybe a year. Now, we do about 8,300 a year over the past couple of years. It would require a $3 million expenditure over a 40-year area. And with interest and all, our consultants are indicating that this seems to be a minor thing. It's $225 million. Now, what does that do? Is that enough that infrastructure like this has been ignored for a long period of time? That we have tuberculation and use, it's safe, by the way. Nothing wrong with it, but it obviously reduces your capacity, which reduces your flow and pressure and all that. But still, we have an obligation to remove that. And most of these mains now, the pipes are 100 years old. Again, this one was taken out of Maines Road and it's a 1927 installation. So, even if we voted this project and complete this project, the last pipe we take out of the mountain is gonna be about 150 years old. Now, is it logical to say that we're gonna have a mobile water main break? Yes. And if we don't do it, they're gonna be, what, 200 years old before we finally get to it? So, we have a challenge in the water department. So, as you noticed in last year's budget, I began to add a water main installation component and I began to add a roadway restoration component, small, minor and chromatic. So, that's one way to get to where I think you want to be, Mr. Chairman. But it's not, it doesn't get you to a whole scale review of roads, but it is incrementally one way to do it. However, if the city does adopt some measure of a capital improvement plan to improve our water mains, consistent with that has to be a certificate road management program. Because you dig up a road and you put a water main in, that's a pretty good size project. So, unless as a community, we accept the fact that permanent trenches are not pleasing to look at, but they're safe and appropriately constructed and repaired and maintained. But is there a will to do that? My sense is probably not, which means that there needs to be a sufficient road component that's comparable to your water main construction. So, unfortunately, right now, our road plan is somewhat limited to non-water main projects. And our water mains, we are pretty much tied to mass water, which is giving us about $1 million a year. And those years not to get to us, right? It's kind of a serious, which means 120, 140, 150, 170, 180, 190. That's, unfortunately, that's the niche we're at. And I remind you that Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Chapter 90 money returns about $2 million to the city. Roads drop the city, we have hundreds of miles of roads. Adamsville Home is $1.5 million. So, obviously, $2 million a year doesn't really kite in every neighborhood across the city. So, we do what we can. We've increased our trench budget, as you know. We have our engineers going out in the wintertime to analyze National Grid trenches and they've done thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars of work, not on the quidsey taxpayer dollar paid for by National Grid. So, as a department, we do what we can to fix our puddles, fix our trenches, fix sidewalks. Roads, that's something that obviously that's the preview of the mayor's council to find resources to accommodate. We do what we can to maintain what we have, but obviously, it's a challenge for us as well as for you.
Thank you for clearing that up, because it is important for the general public to know, just because we have appropriation for roads, when you're talking about roads and need water main work, it's a completely different animal, right?
We can't accommodate what exists in mass water money or appropriation here. We cannot accommodate every road that needs to be repaired if they have a water main work. And we can't fix every road that needs a water main repaired, so that's just the reality of, that's just the fiscal reality.
Thank you. Counselor Kane?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Not everyone knows that, though, right? So, not everyone knows that or understands that that's the rationale. So, it's one thing to stand and heard say it, say it here, but that message is not gonna get out of everyone. So, is there some way that we can start to communicate and do for, you know, sidewalk repairs that, hey, this is why your street's not gonna get done?
Well, again, roads have never been within my purview, counsel. That's above my pay grade in a sense. The average road is anywhere from $300 to $500,000. We don't select the roads. If someone asks for a road to be enlarged, we will do that. We'll provide it to the council, we'll provide it to the mayor, of course. But there's a process that I assume takes place that ultimately results in us getting the roads that need to be repaired and we will contract and get them repaired.
No, that's a, that's a great assumption, I guess, because I've never heard of any formalized program for a street repair. So, you know, that's up in the air for me. But you talked about Chapter 90 plenty of it. That's a rein, is that a reimbursement program where that money comes to us and we decide it?
It's not a reimbursement. It's monies that the state, that he gives us, we put it in the canton, all the use for public roads, can't use for private ways. There's a, this process where our engineers substantiate the roads that are going to be repaired, it gets approved, money is accessed. So, it's not a, it's monies that come in from the state, I believe from the state. The gas catchment?
So, in trying to determine how we can better leverage non-personal property or tax dollars for larger scale infrastructure projects like roads and piping, would it be possible at a monitor, if anyone just kind of floated this idea, to bond that money? If it's kept in a separate account, can we leverage that in order to borrow, to do more with that little amount that comes in out of here, basically?
Sorry, we confused this question.
Hey, sorry, cover the debt service, basically, float it along, but use that money.
Use the Chapter 90 money to cover that? I'm not su, I wouldn't want to comment on that today. I don't know if there's certain regulations that you have to follow in order to spend the Chapter 90 money.
Are you a little systems?
I can, I can look into it.
I would appreciate it if you could look into that.
Yes, I will.
Because, you know, we're having this discussion, Counselor Cole mentioned, hey, you know, we're having this discussion on Monday about hotel motel tax, trying to create other uses for those revenues, in that case for the?
And I can go behind some of that, and Terry could, under your authority. Obviously, one council needs to approve actions by this municipality and the other municipality about the consistency of the regulations. And I've been a council, when that money has not come in.
Yep.
And I've been a council or a resident, when that money has been reduced.
I got you.
So, it's a great idea, some people explore. If you were one council, would you, if this is a 30-year loan, and you were about to indicate that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts could be committed to $2 million a year, for Chapter 90, it'd probably be reluctant.
Yeah. Okay. No, I totally understand, but just frankly creative in years because the infrastructure problem's not gonna go away, it's only gonna get worse. And there's no way that we can be relying or waiting for federal, state dollars. As a municipality, we have all the, you know, power in the world to be coming up with sort of financial policies in order to let us use dollars, so.
It would be my hope that next year's, or soon, there will be appropriation for road repairs. It needs, it needs to be an appropriation. And that's supportive of Chapter 90, supportive on occasion perhaps of the bond issue. So, maybe the bond issues could be for your major investments. I think we built that in appropriation over a period of time, some of what we're doing with snow and ice, so, you know, methodically gradually moving up so that no one generation feels the entire kit of a significant road repair budget. But I think the combination of those three things, having the water department doing a little bit more with water mains and maybe a project or two and do some roads that way, if that's approved, maybe expanding mass water programs, that may be helpful.
But again, understanding the needs are also important. So, you gave us a number of that, that 224 million, 226 million? That's huge. I've never heard a number like that before. At least that gives you a place to start, if you can work from there to break it down here every year. I have no idea what that means for streets, but, you know, if we added that number to 226, we'd probably be in a better position to plan for it in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Counselor Kane, I know that the auditor had some input on that.
Just, just going back to the Chapter 90 money, I believe what happens is when, when the money is spent, the city, I believe, has to make a submission to the state in order to receive the reverse of that.
Okay, that's, thank you. That's what I thought, I was reimbursing.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel DeBonner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to start with my same commission, you're doing a great job. Thank you for all your hard work. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the sidewalks. They're an A-plus out there, looking fantastic. Just to elaborate a little bit, when you do the outside private contracting, is that the cement version of what you put down or what they put down?
Yes, particularly here, we focused initially on doing our concrete work, through then. But that doesn't mean that that's always gonna be the case because in the fall, when our DPW crews transition to sweeping, we're gonna bring the private contractor back to fill those few weeks. So, there's a seamless transition from sidewalk to the end of year as opposed to that two or three week gap when we go into sweeping and nothing gets done. So, and they'll be doing concrete if the weather permits. Concrete as well as asphalt. So, they'll be doing both.
So, the concrete, what's the, you know, on the average, how much it costs for the concrete for sidewalks across the city?
Actually, depending on the size, 2,000, 2,500. Asphalt, $1,000, 1,500.
And the asphalt is done in-house?
We have two existing crews right now doing asphalt sidewalks. Every day they're out there doing them. We have, those positions are in this budget, we have, we have two foremen. Each foreman has a sidewalk crew. I asked them to select the people that they want to work with. They've done that. So, this really is a, boy, the model. Or we can say should not have talked about it. My goal was to get as many sidewalks done as I possibly could, utilizing the talent that we have in the department this construction season. So, I brought the two foremen in, both with tremendous amount of experience, both in the department, as well as those sidewalks. I asked them, "What position do you need?" That are more efficient. And this was after we had our engineers overseeing both our private company, different companies do it, and our folks do it. So, we combined the resources of our, of our engineer looking at things and the historical operational knowledge of two experienced foremen to generate a plan that we think is appropriate for success. And they've been doing a tremendous job.
Our Chapter 90 funding that we had this past year, as well as our $5 million appropriation from the CIP. from the CIP, have we eaten into all that financial funding against, or is it just above?
Yeah, the, the roads that are out there, what council, I assume we've been working with the mayor's office. Mr. Walker could probably ponder doing that more than I, but it may be a little bit of flexibility, but nothing substantial to me for the needs that Counselor Cole is mentioning.
If I could, through view to the mayor's oversight, but we, we pretty much tapped out on, it's not bad. Although we've appropriated for the CIP, $5 million appropriation, and our Chapter 90 funding is pretty much take care of that, I believe, is going into April.
Mr. Chairman, through Chapter 90, CIP, we have, we believe to be up to 30 or so streets that are going to be getting done this year. That CIP money from last year, over $5 million, those roads were engineered, selected, and that work is getting done in the spring and summer. We anticipate another $2 million or so in Chapter 90 money that will go out this construction season as well as the mayor's intention, as we discussed, to come back. Next year's capital plan with another appropriation for roads. And as we've talked about, as this council has talked about, other funding sources along the way, when we clear up that snow and ice deficit, that's going to leave us capacity within a new growth within our free cash, perhaps dedicate some of that money on an annual basis. And there is, considering, open to, and has had discussions about appropriation to the budget. And then then, we talk about CIP when it comes to sewer and water. We've done a great number of water mains in the last hour and a half, some of the leadership commissioner marking the waters, we've got a lot more work to do. We have the opportunity to do some through MWR. We also have some opportunity to do that through the plumbing capacity in the water and sewer enterprise. When you see in the capital plan, while it's not a specific piece of the appropriations before you currently, there is, within that plan, expectations that the number of water mains being done in the city will be increased in the coming years.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I appreciate that. You know, we, we're looking outside the box to try and find more funding and more sources to tackle the roads, obviously, out there. We're getting a handle, like Counsel, from what you said, on the sidewalks. It's just actually tackling the roads with more, obviously, vehicles on the road, there's more traffic, so we need to take care of the roads. So I want to thank you, Commissioner, for all your hard work. I can see it out there driving around. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.